And, uh, good evening and welcome to this meeting of the State and City Council. It is Tuesday, the 22nd of August, 2017. Would all those of a like mind please join me for a fight.
I'd like to hear the fight of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation, under God, in it is all, with everything in it has a role.
All right, let's see. Everyone is here that needs to be tonight except Counselor. Yeah, Nigle, thank you. And so, we will go ahead on it. We don't have any new people to introduce. Are there any additions to the agenda? Or declarations of ex parte contact, conflict of interest, bias, et cetera? Hearing none? We'll go on to comments and presentations from the public. Ms. Brazelton, Debbie Brazelton, would you up and tell us who you are and where you live and your topic?
Sure. My name is Debbie Brazelton. I'm the Assistant Principal at State and High School. Going into my fourth year here with the school district. I live actually in Silverton, but I am here as a representative of the Fourth of July Committee, State and Fourth of July Committee. We were fortunate enough to receive one of the community grants this last year for a thousand dollars. Hopefully, you received our thank you letter for that, and I wanted to come and thank you in person. I remembered hearing last year that you often don't get feedback as far as how the dollars were spent, how the event that the money was used for went, and all of those things. So, I wanted to make sure that we did that this year for you. So, this will be, uh, this was the end of my second year as part of the committee. The committee is made up of only about nine people that are interested in keeping the Fourth of July going. So, it's, if you divide all of the work amongst the nine of us, it's quite a, quite a significant amount of work. We were successful this year in raising funds, more so than, more funds than any of the years past that I have record for. We raised about eleven thousand two hundred and seventy-five dollars from sponsorships from businesses throughout the community. And that's about twenty-seven hundred more than the year before, which was the most that had been raised in the last few years since we've been keeping track. So, we're pleased with that. The event, as it stands, costs about ten thousand dollars to put on. Majority of that is the fireworks. I think they're about seventy-five hundred, if I remember correctly. But I don't know if any of you had the ability to be here in Stateon on the Fourth. The Fourth of July fireworks that are put on here are the best that I have seen in any community. I think they're very well done. Mike Miller has agreed to be our committee chair moving forward into this next year. For those of you that don't know Mike, he is the head of maintenance for North Saniam School District and has been the one in charge of setting off the fireworks. I think he said this was his 24th year, or he's going into his 24th year of doing that here in Stateon. So, he's got a lot of experience and it shows. I think our fireworks show was phenomenal. For those of you that don't know all of the details of the parade, one of the things that takes a significant amount of time and organization, other than the fundraising, which is the lion's share of the work really, is setting up for the day itself, in particular the parade. So, we had a small group of people, a couple of people, who sort of took on the responsibility of putting on the parade. We had fifty entries this year, which was the most that we have logged in recent years. And so, in that sense, it was, it was really successful and well done. Recent Stateon High School graduate Ryan Ferret was our emcee for the parade. And then festivities moved over to the high school football practice field where we had free events for kids. We've been very purposeful about not charging families for their kids to do events. We had cornhole boards that were built and bounce houses, some sort of old-fashioned games, ring toss that was pretty challenging, I found out after we got started, and gunny sack races, those kinds of things. So, I think that they were really enjoyed. And we had music put on by a DJ who donated his time as well. So, by the time fireworks rolled around and the evening was really underway, the field, the practice field was pretty full, and so, it was a good turnout. So, I wanted to say thank you. We have applied for the grant again this year and will, we'll hope to have at least the same and hope to continue to make it a bigger event as we move forward. So, thank you very much. Any questions?
Anyone?
I'd like to thank you for coming and giving us an update.
I know how this goes, so, yeah. On the other end of things, yeah. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Debbie. Okay, all right. Uh, Van Schoenborn.
Good morning, or good evening. I'm Van Schoenborn. I live at 813 Southwest Eighth Street in Sublimity, and I'm here to represent the State and High School Booster Club. And went, had some parents that were interested in maybe painting an eagle head on the middle of the street. And so, I went to Lance, our state, our Public Works, and so, he, he's went to the mayor and then the mayor came back, or not the mayor, the, uh...
City manager.
City manager.
I've been working with the city administrator, that's correct.
And so, they had some questions. And so, like, they wanted to see the picture of what it would look like. They wanted to know the dimensions. They wanted to know who would maintain it. They wanted to know if the school district was, uh, gonna be a support of it. And am I missing anything, Lance?
No, there at the top of my head, that seems about right.
So, anyway, so, this last week, I've compiled all that information and have sent most of it to Lance and then, uh, or the principal, Mr. Kirby, has sent a letter to the city manager and, uh, in his support of the Booster Club painting this eagle head on the street. And it's gonna look pretty much like what we have on our school building. It's gonna be, we're looking at probably about ten or twelve foot in diameter. We were gonna use ODOT-approved paint so that it would hold up. And the Booster Club has agreed to maintain it so it doesn't go fading. And, uh, so, anyway, uh, they said that one of the steps that was gonna have to happen is that it would have to come before the City Council for approval of that to happen. And so, because it didn't happen last Wednesday, all this stuff coming in, 'cause I knew, like, Monday or Tuesday, that that had to be done, uh, that I was gonna present at this time so that, uh, we could get it going before school started, hopefully.
I'd like to add that to that, Mr. Mayor. One of the reasons I told Van that I thought it was important to go before the City Council's because, if you recall, for the last several years that we've had races in this community, any kind of paint on the ground, there's some concern, and I thought it was important to bring this and let the council decide whether or not they would like this on their streets. Uh, I'm sorry, I didn't mean to speak there, Keith, but that was one of the reasons we got, I got you involved as well.
Yeah, I mean, I think we're a little ahead of ourselves. I sent, I sent you a message today to kind of talk and try to work out maybe some of the details before we came to the council and answering some of the questions. I had a conversation with Lance today as well. I agree, at some point, if we, if we can work everything out, it would need to come in front of the council. I do think we should, we should meet, talk and discuss some of the bigger issues. It's just not as simple as painting something on the street.
Van, anything else? And would you take some questions, please?
Sure.
Okay, go ahead.
So, I'm, I'm going, I'm assuming, but I'll just verify that, clarify that you're talking about the street in front of the high school?
Yes, we were gonna paint one there on Locust Street to the entrance of the school and also one on Gardner.
Okay.
And this is, you know, you see that in different towns, like in college towns where they, they put the mascot in the middle of the street and the college, on, street in front of the college and stuff. So, that's where the idea came from.
Right.
Van, I think it, you know, the school spirit and boosterism is a wonderful thing. My mom is a retired educator. Mark Cronkite's council here, I live in the council. Um, but can you put it on, like, the school driveways or something? Wouldn't that be, at Lake Oswego High School, we had a giant Pilot Joe on the, on the driveway, which was a private drive leading to the school, just like you have at Stateon. 'Cause otherwise, Regis is gonna want the Rams and the middle schools are gonna want their logos on it, and then the elementary schools are gonna want their logos on it, and pretty soon, you'll have logos all over town. That would, that'd be one of my concerns.
That was gonna be a backup, but the original idea was in the middle of the street.
I think it's great and put it on your driveways big and bold.
Yeah.
I, it's not that easy to get a lot of volunteers together to, to offer to maintain it and to paint it and that kind of stuff, so I don't see a big run on stuff. But, but I did wanna know, other than the concerns that, that you had brought forward, were there other concerns, Keith, besides that?
Yeah, I do think there are other concerns on top of that as well. So, I think we should, there's something we should talk about and work through and see if we can work it out. And I did suggest in my message that, you know, maybe moving it to the parking lot of the school would be, be better, and the concern would be, you know, going to Mark's point, it could expand even beyond that. So, you know, where do we draw the line, how to draw the line, and upkeep and care and other such things.
Okay, I think that I just saw one. Isn't, is it Independence or Monmouth that I thought I saw one when I...
Well, there's one at Western.
Yeah, maybe that's, I was just in Monmouth today and went, thought, and I thought it looked really neat, that it was, uh, really kind of showed the community's backing of, uh, of the school and its team. And actually, just noticed it. It's surprising you're here tonight, 'cause I literally just noticed it today. That looked great.
Van, have people that have done these or, or allowed them, sponsored them, whatever, do they kind of minimize the distraction element of it? Especially if that eagle was gonna go up by the bank on First and Locust, or were you gonna put, put these things down closer to the school grounds?
No, this would be in the entrance into the parking lot on Locust, and the other one would be on the entrance on the street going into, off of Gardner.
Oh, okay.
So, it'd be right there, right there by the school property.
Yeah, that takes, that takes care of my concern. Anyone else? No.
So, we'll wait to hear what Keith comes up with. You're gonna, I, the impression I get is Keith is that you wanna work on this before we talk about it anymore.
Yeah, I'd like to meet and talk and discuss some of those, those concerns.
Okay.
Okay, thank you for your time.
We're, we're good for now.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else on comments from the public? Then, let's go to the consent agenda. It's August 7th, 2017 City Council minutes. Folks have a chance to review those?
We have. By move, we approve the misreadment?
Okay, got a motion to approve as, uh, as presented. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
All right, and a second to approve as, as submitted. So, all in favor, say aye, please.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Hearing none, we'll declare the motion passed and we'll go to a, I believe we have a public hearing. We do. A proposed code amendment regarding accessory dwelling units in residential zoning districts. Commencement of the public hearing. Script to be read at commencement of public hearing. All right. Good evening, my name is Hank Porter, Mayor of Stateon. I will be presiding over this hearing. This is a time and place set for the public hearing in the matter of land use file number five dash oh six slash seventeen concerning legislative amendments to the Land Use Development Code allowing the construction or placement of accessory dwelling units in the low-density residential and medium-density residential zones. Uh, no, T H, that's a note for later. The hearing is now open. At the back counter is the agenda for this evening's meeting, which lays out the order in which people will be called on to speak during the public hearing, a copy of the proposed amendments, the City Council's rules of procedure for land use, public hearings, and a perceived brochure written to facilitate your participation in the public hearing. You're encouraged to obtain and read a copy of these documents as well. At this time, I'd ask the audience if there are any objections to the notice for this hearing. I hear none. To the jurisdiction of this body to hear and consider this matter? I hear none. Are there any declarations of conflict of interest, ex parte contact, or bias by any members of this body? And I hear none. We are now ready for the staff report. Mr. Fleishman?
Great, thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. As described in the mayor's opening statement, the issue before you tonight is a public hearing on legislative amendments to the Land Use and Development Code. These amendments, if enacted, would permit the creation, placement, construction of one accessory dwelling unit on a lot that already has a single-family detached dwelling on it in the low-density and medium-density residential zones, which are the two zones that allow detached, single-family homes. This is an issue that, uh, was initiated by the Planning Commission back in the spring. One of the Planning Commissioners at the end of a meeting said, "Hey, what, what is the city's policy about tiny houses?" Uh, I explained that currently, we do not allow tiny houses or any other type of accessory dwelling unit. Our code says in the single-family district, you get one single-family detached house per lot. And I suggested that if the Planning Commission wanted to look at the issue of tiny homes or tiny houses, that they look at the broader issue of accessory dwelling units. I provided them with a number of papers and research documents on various issues. They essentially came up with what they'd like to do is allow accessory dwelling units with, at single-family homes. The way the code is written, you could take your existing house and divide it into two. By creating a accessory dwelling unit in the house, you could add a, construct an addition to the house, or you could build or move in a separate detached structure as an accessory structure that someone could live in. And the Planning Commission has proposed a number of standards that would apply to an accessory dwelling unit. The proposed amendments restrict their size to, they must be at least two-hundred-and-fifty square feet, but may not be any larger than eight-hundred square feet. It requires that the principal dwelling unit remain a minimum of a thousand square feet, which is what our code requires a new home to be. And it requires that at least one of the dwelling units on the property be owner-occupied. And finally, it requires an additional parking space be provided for the dwelling, for the accessory dwelling unit. Our code requires that single-family homes have a minimum of two parking spaces, so this would require one for the accessory dwelling unit.
So, Dan, that's a total of three?
So, that would be a total, right, a minimum of three parking spa, off-street parking spaces. If someone has a two-car garage and garage space in front, I mean, and driveway space in front of the garage, then they already have four. Finally, you've got in your packet a copy of Senate Bill 1051 that was enacted by the legislature. The last time I checked the legislature's website, it had not yet been signed by Governor Brown, but I've been told that she has now signed it, but I haven't verified that. I have not heard anything in the news that she's issued a notification that she's going to veto it. So, but anyway, um, the, this new law requires that any city with a population greater than twenty-five-hundred must allow at least one accessory dwelling unit for each detached single-family dwelling in, um, in zones where detached, single-family dwellings are permitted, subject to, quote, "reasonable local regulations regarding siting and design." While the bill itself was written and enacted as emergency legislation, therefore becomes effective when signed by the governor, this section does not become effective, become operative, whatever the difference between operative and effective is, until next July. But should you choose tonight to not enact these regulations or any regulations, we will be back sometime before next July in order for the city to be in compliance with the new, the new requirements that the legislature has enacted. So, uh, oh, the other thing you've got in your packet is a letter that the city received from the Department of Land Conservation and Development, encouraging the city to adopt these regulations, and suggesting several changes to the proposed amendments. The Planning Commission, after reviewing the suggestions from the DLCD, chose not to make any changes in the proposal. The, the DLCD expressed concern about the parking requirements, suggesting that there, we should not require any additional parking, and also expressed concern about the requirement for owner occupancy. The Planning Commission was concerned, quite frankly, with the, um, condition of much of the rental housing and the lack of maintenance and the apparent control of tenant activity in much of the rental housing in this community, that not including that requirement would, would lead to undesired impacts in neighborhoods, where that if it was owner-occupied, those impacts would, would, would more likely to be minimized. And hence, the requirement for owner occupancy of at least one of the units. So, with that, I'll answer any questions you have before we open it up to testimony from the public.
Okay, questions from council? Go ahead, Brian.
Dan, can you reiterate what the current code allows right now? You said...
Currently, in the low-density and medium-density zone, you're allowed to, there are other uses permitted, but if you have a single-family home, you just get, you just get one. And the code is clear, no matter how big your lot is, there's only one detached, single-family home permitted. In the medium-density zone, a duplex is a permitted use. You do not need any additional land. So, in the medium-density zone, someone today could put an addition on their home to be a second dwelling unit. The code would allow that.
Okay, and the state, uh, legislation is addressing specifically those zones or not?
Uh, the, the new legislation says that a city with a population of twenty-five-hundred or more shall allow in areas zoned for detached, single-family dwellings.
Should be low-density.
Which is the low-density and medium-density zones.
Okay, thank you.
So, while the Planning Commission started this process before the legislature enacted this law, it appears the legislature's now told us that we have to do what we've set out to choose to, or at least what the Planning Commission was choosing to, to recommend to you that we do.
Dan, is, uh, am I...
It's been signed. I can, I can confirm it has been signed by the governor.
Go ahead, jump in there.
No, I just wanna say, I, I went online and confirmed it has been signed by the governor.
Okay, it has been signed. Let me get a comment in here, before, before I forget it. The provisions in that state law are addressing manufactured housing. That's probably gonna be the lightning rod, isn't it?
Uh, this bill does not address, oh, actually, there are other sections of this bill that do address manufactured housing. I don't think they do anything that we don't already do here in Stateon. I don't, other, other than accessory dwellings, I don't think that this Senate bill will require us to change our code or change our practices in how we regulate residential development.
I just wonder how the community's gonna react, would react to, uh, not a resh, but starting to see single-wide mobile homes on these, on these lots. I don't know, I, it's just a thought.
Yeah, we, we do not allow a single-wide, so if the, if this new bill does require us to do so, which I don't remember reading, then that would be a change we need to make in the code.
Okay. Unnecessary fear on my part, probably.
Okay, how do they, how do they, does it say that you have to have, like, a foundation? How do they keep, how do they keep mobile homes from, and trailers from being part of this?
Uh, well, mobile, by, by the definition of what a manufactured housing unit is, so a tra, it needs to have either a, um, an insignia saying that it was built to the federal standards, which a travel trailer cannot and does not, or is, meets the state's standards for manufactured housing. And again, a trailer, thinking of a travel trailer, does, does not meet those standards.
But a single, yeah, Mr. Fleishman, a single-wide dwelling unit, like, by Global or Golden Homes or something?
A single-wide manufactured housing unit would have one of those two insignia on it. Currently, I guess I, I must have missed that in the bill.
There's nothing that I could read that would prohibit that because it...
But, but our code, um, our code requires, outside of a mobile home park, our code requires that a manufactured housing unit essentially be a double-wide.
The, the other question, why don't they can bring in a double-wide if they had enough space? The other question was on Angela Carnahan's letter.
Yeah.
On point, one of the Carnahan letter was about, um, pre-existing homes that do not convert, can, can, that are non-compliant. Basically, I think she went into paragraph on that. Can they then also put in a, if you have a non-compliant home?
Yeah, I, I do not believe that our code and the amendments that are before you would prohibit a non-conforming structure. So, if you're, if you don't meet your, the current front yard setback because your house is too close to the street, there's nothing in our code that would prohibit you from having an, an accessory dwelling unit.
Would that have a negative impact, or would that be something we want?
I don't think that it would have a negative impact.
I don't know how many non-conforming homes there are in this town. I imagine there are quite a lot.
Probably, in the older parts of town, probably quite a few.
Yeah, yeah. Let's hear, let's hear, for the soul, the old parts of town. Come to their defense. Okay, any other questions from the council at this point? Okay, proponents' testimony? Those in favor of, of this? I think, how about opponents? Okay, any general testimony? And questions from the public, anything? This mass of humanity that we're having to deal with tonight, okay?
All those people in Stateon was cool yesterday.
Yeah, they're all gone.
Yeah, they all went home. Questions from the council, more of that? Are there any other, uh, insights we can share?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
Not much of a question, just a statement. I think if we, we'll be forced to deal with this in July, I don't see the need to press it tonight. And I think the community should be more aware of this than just passing it tonight. Just my thought.
I certainly share that, that emotion. I certainly share that emotion. Okay, that thought. Dan, a staff summary, please.
I don't have much more to add, other than to say, notices have gone out of this public hearing, of the Planning Commission's public hearing. We had the exact same level of participation at the Planning Commission's public hearing. I will say, I did get one phone call prior to the Planning Commission's public hearing from someone who was expressing concern when I urged her to come to the hearing or to send a letter. She said, "Well, I guess that's the way it's going to be," and that was the end of it, and hung up on me. So...
But she's not wrong.
Well...
I guess she told you, huh?
Yeah.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes. Priscilla?
Is there, I mean, the way that I'm seeing it with the state requiring us to do this, it's not something up for debate. So it seems like to put it out, to put it into the public any more than we already have with the public notice, seems like just putting out something that we're going to have to do anyway, because that's not a debatable issue.
Yeah.
We're going to have to do this by law, so we might as well just do it.
I agree, but I also agree with Council Quigley that if we could, you know, we're going to have to do this, we have no choice in the matter. But we have until next July to have Dan look at the finer points of the law and provide us with input on the ramifications of it, and also the time that gives us, ten and a half months for the community to be aware that we're going to have to do this, so it doesn't look like we're putting the cart before the horse or whatever. My thought is it's just time to educate the community and time to further refine, as our mayor said.
Any more than we're accused of doing that anyway. But we can, Dan, would you agree that it's possible we can tailor this to our community?
That we did.
I believe that the Planning Commission has done that, that the amendment before you, the amendment before you reflects the concerns of the Planning Commission.
One of the things that concerns me is the use of our time. It's like, when we visit this 10 months from now, because we now have to go back through everything, and Dan needs to remind us of everything that he said, and again, it's not something that is debatable. The Planning Commission has already taken their time to develop it for our community, and so it's just a time-consuming to come back to it when there's, when, again, there's been two public hearings, two options for people to come, so I don't see any reason to make it continue on.
I'm only sensitive because of a dog bark and the thought that there wasn't enough time to comment on it.
Again, the people who thought that didn't look at the process, because it was a long process, and it was a process that was followed, the law was followed, and I think the idea of the law was followed also, but...
Okay. Is there anything else?
You're going to call the question.
Okay, let's close the hearing and go to council deliberation. We've got some choices presented to us this evening, and they are approve the first consideration of ordinance 1010. And that is in front of us, or approve the ordinance with modifications, return the ordinance to staff for further refinement, or retain the code unchanged. What would you folks like to do?
I would move to approve the ordinance number 1010 as presented.
Okay.
I'd second it.
Got a motion and a second to approve the first consideration of ordinance 1010 as presented. Is there any other discussion? Would you, yeah, would you poll the council, please?
Yes. Counselor Gladwell?
Yes.
Counselor Russellman?
Yes.
Counselor Cronquist?
Yes.
Counselor Quigley?
No.
Motion passes three to one.
If the vote is not unanimous, ordinance 1010 will be brought before the council for a second consideration at the September 18, 2017 meeting. Okay. So...
Can I make a comment, Mayor?
What's that? Yes, please, go ahead.
Actually, maybe a question. I'm wondering if somebody has an idea of how we could go about, in some different way, letting people know more. Brian, you specifically, how would you suggest? Because I agree that it would be nice if more people had input, but I don't know how to go about it any more than putting public announcements out there. I'm just wondering if there was some other way, because just time isn't doing anything.
Sure.
So there has to be some way.
The first time I know about this was when it was on the agenda.
Okay. But what I'm saying is, what, if you want the community to know about it, what is the process?
I would say, is the agenda for the council meeting posted on this community site?
Yes, it is, as is the agenda for the Planning Commission.
So what needs to be done has been done, and I agree, it doesn't seem to get the word out there.
It's also on state and events, and in our town, and in the shopper, and in the...
Yeah, I just don't know what more, or if there's something more that we could do. I'd love to be in the process of helping do it.
I guess just, you know, if it's an issue that's specific, like this one, to me, I'm going to use my word of mouth to tell as many people as I can, I guess. And that's why we have it set up like this, when there's not unanimous, it goes to the next thing, so give some people some time to consider it.
And to spread the word, sure. Okay. All right. Anything else on that? Well, let's go, let's go to unfinished business then. We can only keep Jill here for another half, 25 minutes, so let's get a bunch of this done. New business, ordinance number 1011, amending state municipal code 5.20 relating to solicitors. Chief Stevens, please.
Mayor and council, I bring to you tonight ordinance number 1011, which is an ordinance to amend the code 5.20 relating to solicitors. In the past, we've had issues with solicitors in the community going door-to-door and causing problems for some of the residents in town. By putting these changes into the code, it strengthens up our soliciting code to help the officers out in enforcing these, and particularly helping the residents when they do not want solicitors coming at their door at all hours of the night, and not leaving when they want them to leave. So what this does is it sets time parameters on when solicitors can go door-to-door. It tells them that if they refuse to leave when the homeowner asks them to leave, that they can be either arrested for trespassing, or they can have their permit revoked. It does not allow, keeps them from going into the home and things like that, so...
Mr. Mayor?
Go ahead.
Is there a religious exemption to that? Because I've been told by certain denominations...
Yes.
That they don't have to apply, they need to show up at my door?
That is correct.
Nonprofits and charitable organizations.
Correct. Nonprofits and religious organizations are exempt from this.
So does this include door hangers, Rich, where you're not knocking on the door, you're not selling anything, you're just passing out advertisement?
In the past, it has. Dan, do you want to comment on that?
The way the definition of soliciting reads, if you are distributing literature for the purpose of trying to sell a good or service...
Then it's considered soliciting.
Then you need a license. So one of the local pizza joints pretty much annually gets a license for a number of their employees, because they're out putting pizza flyers in people's doors.
One of the local pizza joints.
I just...
One of the local pizza joints regularly gets a license. I don't know whether the other pizza joints are also out leaving literature.
Sometimes there's confusion between the solicitor and the itinerant merchant. The itinerant merchant is the salesperson that has the food cart or the selling, whatever it happens to be, and they're going to a street corner or a parking lot, and/or they're driving through the neighborhood with their food cart, selling the items that way. That is different, because the person is, the citizen is going to the vendor themselves versus the vendor going to the person's doorway.
Like Shwan's or whatever.
Correct. Shwan's is different, because they, you pay for that prior to...
They just deliver.
They're exempt, because they're just delivering the food.
That's no different than the UPS drive.
I found it very unfriendly as a business owner in this town, probably just because it was one other thing I had to deal with. I do door hangers in Salem. I actually have people on my staff that do nothing but door hanging. But when I actually had business out here, and I had to get a light, a permit to do it, you had to tell who the person was, so the person had to go down and get their things. Well, I didn't always know who the person was going to be that day, so either I had to pay for all of them to go down and get done, and then also, it could be, you have to tell exactly which day it is. So if it's minus 10 below and raining, and you don't want your person out there, you just wasted your money by paying for it. And so, like, I found it way too strict for, you know, if I could have just been a little more free, like, you know, like I could door hang anytime that week or something, would have been much easier than to try and pinpoint days, particularly in the winter. Anyway, I found it to be unfriendly to my business.
Isn't it great, though, that all this, all this advertis, what an adventure advertising, paid advertising is?
It is.
You know, anyway. Oh, moving right along. What would the, what would you folks like to do with this? Council deliberation, and then some action on it.
I have one other question. Why, this looks to me just like what it was before. Is there actually changes in it?
Yes, there's quite a few additions to it.
And the additions being maybe the enforcement part of it, or...
Do you have a colored copy of it?
Oh, okay, never mind. Needs to turn the page.
Oh, there it is, yeah.
The blue underlined is the, is the additionals.
Chief, is this, has this been a problem? Is it a kind of a low-grade irritant, or, I mean, a constant kind of thing?
Every year, usually at the beginning of the summer, end of the spring, is when we usually have the majority of the problems. And many times, or most of the vendors are from out of town. A lot of times, they're selling, well, it ranges from the vacuum cleaners to the people selling magazines for the business that's not even in the community, and they're just going door-to-door. Many of them will not leave when you ask them to leave. We've had problems with theft, where the people have come back and stolen from the people later. We've had issues where they come in at all hours of the night, coming at nine o'clock at night, when you're trying to put your kids to bed, they knock on the door, things like that.
So there's no law that says that we could arrest someone for trespassing if they're at your house and they don't leave, that, without this law?
You can, but this makes it a little bit simpler.
So this will make your job a lot easier?
Yes.
Excellent.
With the trespassing law, the way you have to, usually the way the courts want to see it, is they want you to, the person to tell the person to leave, then the officer has to go and tell them to leave, and then if they come back again the next time, then that's when you can arrest them for it. Whereas this allows us just to give them the citation.
What would you folks like to do with this? Chief assures us it's going to make a safer, happier community, and make his job easier?
I see no drawbacks to that. I think we approve it.
Okay. A motion to approve ordinance number 1011. Is there a second, please?
I second it.
Joe, thank you. A motion and a second to approve state municipal code 5.20, ordinance number 1011. Is there any discussion, any more discussion? If not, let's go to a decision. All in favor, say aye.
Right.
Opposed, same sign?
Aye.
Aye? Aye. Oh, okay.
Was that a no, or?
The unhappy, the unhappy door hanger lady.
The business person.
Business person, there we go. Ordinance number 1012, amending state municipal code number 9.36.020 relating to miscellaneous violations. Chief?
Mayor and council, I bring to you the second ordinance for tonight, which is ordinance 1012, and it's relating to miscellaneous violations. We currently have a section in the code that allows the officers to cite people for a list of crimes that are listed in the Oregon revised statutes as crimes, but allows us to handle them as violations through our municipal court. Currently, we do not handle crimes through our municipal court, and the lists that you see here on the, actually, in the actual code, which is A through, currently A through I, are items that the district attorney has generally not addressed in the criminal court either. These are items that have been issues in the community, and it allows the officers to cite the, cite the person directly into the municipal court, so that our own court and judge can handle these issues. What I'm adding tonight is the sale, possession, and use of fireworks currently, or, which is also known as the illegal fireworks. Currently, that is a big misdemeanor in the code, and so an officer would actually have to arrest somebody for shooting off illegal fireworks. And so generally, the officers do not deal with that. They usually take the, confiscate the fireworks and tell the person not to do it again. Whereas this way, it's a little bit easier for the officers to deal with when they can just give them a citation. The second issue that we have added to it is a failure to return a suspended registration. When somebody is habitually driving a car or having other people drive their car that are currently suspended, it allows the court to suspend the actual registration of the vehicle, so that the vehicle cannot be registered that is owned by the suspended driver. And currently, that that is a C felony, not a C felony, but a C misdemeanor, and this allows us to run that through the court as well.
Hmm, that's interesting. Do that again, the last part on...
Yeah, please.
Can you actually, what, then seize a vehicle?
No, you're seizing the license plates.
Oh, take the plates off.
Correct. DMV, when the court sees that it's necessary to suspend a registration on a vehicle, they order the person to return their license plates back to DMV and to not drive the vehicle until they get their court issues resolved, just paying their fines and things like that. And this allows the, currently, the way it is in the code is that they actually get arrested if they keep those plates.
Okay.
And this allows us to handle it through our own court by giving them a citation instead.
Okay. All right, good, thank you on that one. Other questions on this one, folks?
Sure.
Go ahead.
Go ahead.
Chief, real quick, does the fire chief have any enforcement authority?
The fire chief does not, but the fire marshal does, which is through the state police.
Through your department, is that what you said?
No, through the state police.
State marshal, okay.
Fire mar, the state fire marshal has authority to enforce the laws through the, through the state police.
Gotcha, thanks.
The fire marshal's office is underneath the state police. I have talked to them about this, and they saw no issues with doing it this way, and they said that because that it is a misdemeanor, very few people ever get cited for that. Generally, the ones that get cited for it, or arrested, actually arrested for that are those that are selling large truckloads of illegal fireworks.
On the Fourth of July, it seems like a paddle zone, which is the Fourth of July in American tradition. You know, but you can also launch a U.S. Coast Guard-approved signal rocket, because U.S. Coast Guard law, U.S. Coast Guard regulations encourage boaters to practice regularly away from navigable bodies of water. I know, we spend $8,000, we load 37-millimeter shells, but, I mean, defining illegal fireworks, what is an illegal firework? It's, in Oregon, it's something that goes more than, that leaves the ground more than a foot or something like that, and/or...
Yes. It's all very well, very well spelled out in the revised, Oregon revised statute, so of what constitutes an illegal firework. Generally, they're pretty easy to tell the difference. The Roman candles, the people that are launching the large...
The mortars, sure, yeah.
Up in the air, those are the ones that we have problems with.
So, Rich, when you go to, I'm sorry. Okay. Rich, when you go to a place where illegal fireworks are going off, do you cite everyone? How do you know? Do you cite the person who has the house? How do you know who is responsible for the illegal fireworks? Or do you just cite whoever's available, and then they have to prove that it's not theirs?
It can be tricky. Usually, it's the homeowner or the person that, a lot of times, they'll admit it, you'll walk up to them, and they'll, you'll either catch them red-handed with it, or they will, they'll all be pointing at the other guy because... they'll all be pointing at the other guy because they don't want to get caught with the citations.
I, I just don't, I don't, just don't think it's very clear about, I, I don't know how someone could be clear about citing. I don't like citations, number one. I think that once you have one, it's very hard to prove yourself innocent of anything once you get in there. Everyone just assumes because you got the citation, you're guilty. And so if it's, you know, if you're not behind the wheel and you're speeding, that's a very clear citation, it's you. But when you have 20 people out there and there's a firework going off and the homeowner didn't know the person had it, but the only person that's going to be available to cite is the homeowner, they're the one that's going to get it, I'm not so sure I like that.
They're, they're usually not too, not too difficult to figure out who, who is doing it and which one's doing it, doing the, the wrong. So the officers do not cite unless they can figure it out, figure out who needs to be have the citation. They have, they, they still have to have what's called probable cause to believe that the person is the one that did it.
Okay.
It's a fellow missing the finger dances.
So, so actually, Rich, what happens if somebody has, for instance, an agricultural bird bomb or a shotgun shell for discouraging birds eating wine grapes?
Those are exempt.
But there's no difference from that than a large bottle rocket?
The, the law, the law clearly defines which ones are which and it's.
I mean, we make 37 millimeter bird bangers for the wine maker's.
It's, it's, it's defined in the law and allowed to be used for agricultural purposes.
And they're outside of city limits, so they're not our concern.
Oh, okay. It happens in Lynn County, it's Lynn County's problem.
We had to quit shooting them off outside one of the businesses on Main Street a while ago. Anyway, let's go to a vote on this, please, there are council, we've got counsel of liberation. Ordinance 1012, amending State and Municipal Code 9.30.020. You get a motion to do something?
I want a motion to approve.
Okay, thank you. Is there a second?
Sure.
Motion and a second to approve ordinance 1012. Any other questions or thoughts?
I just don't want to cite the whole downtown on the Fourth of July.
Too busy directing traffic.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, well, that, Gus would certainly vote for this. He, he's terrified by those things. I'd have to stay up with him all night. Anyway, could we get a vote on this? All in favor of ordinance 1012, please? Say aye.
Aye.
Okay, and opposed, same sign? Hearing no opposition, we'll declare it passed four to zero and go to proposed resolution, initiated annexation and comprehensive plan amendment. Mr. Fleischman?
Thank you. This, the issue before you with this agenda item is the adoption of a resolution that addresses two pieces of property that the city has recently purchased and initiates the annexation of one of them that's currently not within the city limits and initiates a comprehensive plan and zone map amendment for both of them. And we are talking about the 13 acres of land that the city purchased from the Lambert family in December of 2016, which has already been annexed but is currently designated by the comprehensive plan as residential and zoned medium density residential. And the 26 acre property that the city purchased from the Putney family in January that is, has not yet been annexed into the city, and it is currently designated residential by our comprehensive plan map, and because it's not in the city, it is zoned Marion County urban transition. Adoption of this resolution would initiate the process for annexing the Putney property into the city and to amend the comprehensive plan map for both of these properties from residential to public. And once the, once the process is finalized, to amend the comprehensive, the zoning map from medium density residential to public slash semi-public. In, I provided with, to you in your packet, a map showing these properties. In, in addition to this, just so that you know, while it's not part of the resolution because it's not city property, it's not asking you to initiate it, there is the possibility that we will add in the annexation a strip of land to the west of these city-owned properties that's currently owned by Mr. Kendall. The staff has had some discussions with the owners of the large parcel of land to the north of Mr. Kendall's land about the possibility of them submitting an application for annexation, and they would need to get a street right-of-way dedicated to get access to it. The city attorney has advised that prior to accepting a deed of dedication for the right-of-way, the city should annex the land. And so it may be, assuming we get the consent of Mr. Kendall and he's interested in pursuing that, we may, when we return to the city council after going to planning commission, include that land in the annexation as well. And it would just be a, it's a 30-foot wide strip of land that is part of Mr. Kendall's So if you have any questions, I will try to answer them.
Okay. Folks, what do you, what would you like to do with this?
I move that we approve the resolution as presented.
Okay. You got a motion to approve resolution 966 as presented?
Yes.
I second it.
Okay, Joe, thank you. Any discussion?
Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
I guess this would be another example of infringement on home city rule, I guess, if you want to talk about legislation from, coming down from Salem that influences what we do in town locally. Here it is again.
Yeah, we can't, we can't put these two votes.
Did it call the questions, Mr. Mayor?
Let's see. Let's see, this is a move to approve it, just a simple voice vote. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? Passed four to zero. Thank you all. Staff commission reports, finance department, Cindy and Elizabeth. I was excited for a moment because when I got here, thinking that this was the empty chair and my name that was here. I'd made some headway on this, sending out these landlord notices, turned out it was a staff error, darn it. But maybe it's necessary. I don't want to get, Councilor Gladwell will go on on why I'm always whining about that. Anything, any other questions on that one? Chief, your report.
Mayor and council, I have before you the statistical report for the month of July. Numbers are within standards of what they have been in the past. I would say that the last month, we did have the National Night Out, which was a, was a good, a good event. The number of turnout was down lower from previous years, but we believe that that was because of the heat. That was the week that we had excessive temperatures of over 100 degrees that week, and that, felt that that did play a big part in the numbers that we had.
How was the eclipse besides the collision out here?
So the eclipse was, went very smoothly. We had a large number of officers working, the people, we had numerous compliments from the community and from the people that were from out of town, talking about how, how smooth it went. We just had the one accident as people were leaving town. But other than that, it went, it went well.
Chief, we were just talking about fireworks back to Fourth of July. How, how many, say incidents did we chase down, mess around with on the Fourth this last, this last year or this year?
There was, there was numerous ones. I don't know the number off the top of my head. I'd have to go and pull the reports to see what they do with those. But every year, there's many different reports of illegal fireworks going off, and you see them all over town.
The guys were out chasing these down all evening?
Yes.
Okay.
And the, the biggest issue with them is, is the risk of fire and landing on other people's houses and hitting people with them.
All right. Okay, thank you. Anything else from anyone on that?
Mr. Mayor.
Go ahead.
Just a quick question, Chief, on peer court referrals. How does that, how's that affect, or how's that change every year so much, the swing? Like, looks like for 2016, we did one a month, less than one a month, and this year we're looking like just over two or just, just less than three. You guys finding more interaction with the kids or?
Just about, yeah.
Those numbers, what they're including in there now, what they didn't before is the peer court before just strictly took referrals from the police departments, and now they're refer, they're taking some referrals from parents that are directly calling the peer court and saying, can you?
Okay.
Help us out? So we've added those numbers in there as well.
Okay, good. All right, we're moving on. Lance, Mr. Ludwig, the Public Works report.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Before you, you have the Public Works monthly operating report for July. They're pretty much, all the numbers are pretty much in line with flows and for the month, the summer months. We've had, we produced or, we had 34.6 million gallons of sewage treated. We produced on a, on a big day, 6.2 million gallons of water from our treatment plant. The Public Works operators replaced 12 meters, they cleaned number two filter bed down to treatment plant. Our street crews swept 183 curb miles and collected 30 cubic yards of debris from that. The parks, we had one, I didn't realize this, but we had one volunteer that put in 114 hours. I didn't, did not realize that at all. It may have been the Boy Scout that actually put in the tree identifier signs, but Lisa didn't put that down, so that's what I'm just guessing. He may have, he had a big crew out there doing that. So if you go out to Pioneer Park, he, he put in like 20 tree species identifier signs in front of different species out at Pioneer Park. Came out real nice. We'll have a write-up about him soon in our utility billing or our Alyssa's newspaper. And, and we, we had $43,000 of SDCs last month, single-family dwellings.
All right.
And that concludes July report. If you have any questions, I'll be happy to answer.
Are there any questions for Lance? Go ahead.
I do have a quick question. So what type of SDC would be looking at for the dwelling, additional dwelling?
That's a good question, Brian. I don't think we've looked at that yet quite, but I think it would be very similar depending on how many people live in it. I think it's a matter of people living in it, and, I mean, you're going to have one hookup, right? Or are they going to be using off the hookup of the house?
I think that depends on whether they have an, an additional water meter, an additional service lateral, and that will depend on whether it's a detached structure or attached in what the Public Works standards would require.
I imagine the SDC for stormwater would go up because they're creating impervious area. Transportation, they're adding to our transportation system.
And a park's SDC for sure.
A park's SDC, again, like Dan said, depends if they hook up to the existing sewer from the house that's on the lot or if they had to put in a new service, or if they need a new water meter. You know, all those, it really depends on what they come in with, better than minimum. Transportation, parks, stormwater.
Okay. All right. Mr. Fleischman? Planning and development?
You've got my written report in front of you. The real item of note is the Marion County's Community Services Division or Department or whatever has, had put out a request for proposal from consultants to look at the future of the rail line that runs from Woodburn through Mount Angel, Silverton, and terminates here in Staton. So I participated in a group there assisting them. They have, well, looking at July, we had one meeting to review the RFP. Since that time, actually, the proposals have come in and we, there were two proposals. We've selected a contractor. I haven't heard that yet that a contract's been signed and the work's underway, but.
Dan, do you have a copy of that RFP in your office?
I, I do.
Okay.
I, I have it on the computer, but I can, if you're interested, I'll print it out.
Okay, thank you.
I couldn't understand you.
Can you forward it to us?
Yes. If you all would like to see it, I'll send it to the council. If you don't like to see it, delete my email.
I'll come down and get a copy of it. That's fine, thank you. Anything else? Questions? Thoughts? Okay, so, all right. Jan, library report, please.
Mr. Mayor and council, you have my report in front of you. July is the, mostly a summer reading month, so it's a busy month for us. I'd also like to invite you, our author visit that will be in September, will be the 21st of September. She's an Oregon Book Award winner. She wrote a Civil War historical fiction. It's very interesting.
Okay, thank you. All right. Anything else? Jan, thank you. Any presentations or comments from the public? Anything else this evening? Yes, ma'am.
So, do we have anything on the pool?
We normally have done the pool in the past every quarter. We plan on doing that. If you want to do it every month, we could also do that. It's, it's really, I mean, we're defining how we do this, so we can do it either way.
Okay. I got notice that the volcanoes wanted to recognize Billy as a hometown hero. Did anybody else get?
I haven't heard that, but I liked it.
Okay.
Okay.
Well, I did throw her name out there when they were looking for him, I thought that, but I didn't think they would make me be involved in it. I was trying to get somebody else to maybe be involved in it.
Good job.
Yeah.
We support you. Who better to push every issue out there? Come on. That's fine, I'm glad you, if you put.
Well, I just may not do anything with that. I may call him and tell him that, no, I'm not, because I just don't have any time to put something else on my plate.
All right. Keith, anything on the city administrator?
Yeah, I'd like to, we, we did a community watch party for the eclipse and we put an offer out to staff, and Bob Parsons, who normally does our park maintenance, spoke up and said he would like to do it, and I'd like to recognize Bob for putting on a really nice event and community watch party. He did a fantastic job. And Brenda, at least one of her daughters, helped, and then Pam Pugsley was down helping as well. So just a really nice event, wanted to recognize him. And I think Chief has something you wanted to add as well?
To add to that about some of the volunteers that we had working for the eclipse as well. We had several different of the police volunteers. We had Dave Bevins and Alan Pinto, all who, both of them put in many, many hours, and actually Claudia Camacho, who's one of our cadets, spent hours and hours working the whole weekend. And then we had Sharon Goodman working in our records department so that we could keep our records office open 24 hours a day through the, through the event. And it just went really smoothly. We wouldn't have been able to do it without those volunteers.
All right, good, thank you.
And how with the moon went really smooth too, huh, Rich?
Yep, it did.
Keith, anything else from?
Nothing.
From you this evening?
That's all, Mayor.
Okay. I don't have anything else this evening. Business from the council?
I haven't seen, I haven't looked at my email.
Folks, one, one, one at a time? Any business from the council this evening? Future agenda items then? Community grants on September 18th, we're not going to have a meeting the 5th, start of school and local disruption there. Community grants, West High Street abandonment and Vacation of an Alley continuation. And with that, if there's nothing else this evening, we're done.